Okay, welcome everybody to our council meeting February the 15th. Welcome and we'll move forward on the agenda. Everybody's had a chance to review it. If there's anything anybody's comfortable with that, can I get a motion please? Moved by Councilor Pando. Seconded by Councilor Costa Chai. Can I have your back, Mark? Be resolved, Council, I guess you too, Councilor Pando. Yeah. Be resolved, the Council of Town Nipewa approved the regular meeting agenda for February 15th, 2022, on paper. Here. Okay, you've had a chance to review the minutes. No errors or omissions, everyone's comfortable. Can I move forward with motion on that? Moved by Councilor Nado. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Headley. Be resolved, the Council of Town Nipewa approved the minutes of the regular meeting and two public hearings held February 1st, 2022 as circulated on paper. Here. Okay, we are into council reports. Anybody got one tonight? Thank you, Councilor Harret.
Well, I would like to give compliments out to the staff and to the Finance Committee. Because our fiscal stability is totally based on always being able to plan for tomorrow by preparing for today, and this is what they are doing. And we had a wonderful preliminary meeting today. We don't not run this municipality from paycheck to paycheck. We have to be prepared at all times. That's my kudo to you guys, the Omen. Your compliment may have to this one. So when I just returned from Swan River in Dolphin, firm on health stuff. And I was at stakeholder meetings up there and it was very interesting, we had them in person. And we were dealing with leaders of the communities and what they felt was working right and what they felt their needs were and how they should be addressed. And the Lord talked to Mayor McCutcheon about this, so we'll be initiating our own stakeholder meetings because we do have a spanking project coming up called the hospital. And with the community growing like it has from very many diverse angles, we need the diversity of our community to help plan and organize all the cool stuff that gets to go in it. And while I was up there, I got to have supper with an MLA, a CEO, a CFO, HRVP, and a board of directors and other board of directors who was also a counselor, which then segued into a phone call from Calgary for somebody who does manufacturing and distributes wine and some company distributing wine in North America, so he'll be talking to our Economic Development Officer soon, which is one of the greatest parts of having in-person meetings again and the fact that we have a diverse council and diverse staff who will also go out everywhere and make connections and network for this community. So bam, and your comments are, I'm with you.
Sounds like you were pretty busy. I like the wine part.
Yeah, all right, all right. Cheers.
That was another interesting point, but I thought we were gonna start serving wine in the hospitals.
Okay, thank you, Murray. Anybody else with a council report?
Well, we have a council report, I have, because of the Finance Committee. We did a meeting on February the 15th at 5:00 PM and we've gone a long way on our preliminary discussions for the budget. We've looked at what our immediate revenues have come as a result of the rapid growth of the community, as well as what some of the long-term needs in lots of the community are, and we're gonna be pretty close to getting things wrapped up as we do our first reading of the budget, kind of happen soon. But with good productive conversations and again, it's always a lot easier because of the growth that's happening in the community.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else with a council report? No? Not tonight? Okay. Managed Operations, Danny.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few updates here, so hopefully the residents on Brown Avenue haven't been too disrupted by the river rap polling, but our latest update of today is that we're 75% completing on the Class 350 river rap. So we're getting there, and that is the largest volume, includes that class there. So we moved into their classes. They should be starting this tricky scrubbing removal tomorrow. So the engineers have marked out the limitations of what has to be removed for the immediate work there. We still have summer job postings up and that'll be open until the 28th, so anyone still looking for some work to submit their application or resumes to the Town Hall office would be great. We received a few phone calls, just a few concerns, complaints. We have started widening out the streets again, just because they've just been there and have too much on us. So the unfortunate part is we're doing the widening, we cannot use the snow gates because they're using the wet cars, they can't kind of push everything over the boulevards or we're hauling away where it's deemed necessary. So please just bear with it, residents, and we're doing our best and so are contractors. Last week I did run off one big and met with our engineers just to help plan out some of our planning projects for this year. So whether it be just greenhouses or flow modeling for the community for fire hazards ensuring that speculative draw of the new hospital won't disrupt the system too much and create any havoc in any areas, so there were any different models. We're also working on some different engineering projects for some new projects that we're working on. So water sewer designs, some of Mill Street, potential ECO Lodge 2 expansion as well, Hospital 1, so not Hospital, Hamilton Street projects, so we're just kind of working those out and then looking at some designs on some meter chambers as well. Yeah, well, that's nice. Moving on, next, the staff continue to be training. We're catching up on all our training that was shut down due to COVID, so I think we have another training date tomorrow for staff, we've been doing them a lot of weeks now, making sure it runs up to their standards.
Okay. Any questions, any comments? Yes, Councilor Harret.
Question. Brown and Mountain, it is a disaster for getting onto that highway right now at visibility. I am really concerned about accidents, I've witnessed a couple really close calls. Is there anything we can do as a municipality? I know it is provincial responsibility, but these are people who are residents now and it's becoming a major issue. Like I said, it is blind to come off of Brown and it is one of our few arteries that come from the south side of Main Street, and it's a real concern. Like I said, I've watched, the ice creams almost get hit now coming around some corners because of those high snow piles. I know that is a highly responsible, and I know there being negligence and their duties there right now, but it doesn't mean this is a town maybe shouldn't be stepping in addressing some of those piles short term, even though it's not to what their responsibility is, but it's getting quite bad and another 10 centimeters forecasted to fall this weekend before the weekend's done, so that would be my concern and I had it brought to me by some of the neighbors in the area as well, so.
So is that something we're allowed to do? We could go in there and just give them that on that corner?
I'm not too sure if it's the waiting game or if it's just a staff shortage issue. I can make a note for another follow-up, or we just say the heck with it and do it ourselves?
I kind of like that idea.
Other than beg for giving us rather than asking?
I might have been one of those accidents you were talking about. I know it's tricky though, it really is.
I know, I'd start the staff to go to our only internal intersection within the community or outside, anywhere that was deemed for a low car that could not see, so they've been tapping those, but yeah, that's.
I can't see that.
But a truck, yeah.
I can agree with what you're saying. I have to come up to that because I live on that side of town as well, and yeah, it's absolutely blind trying to cross or even turn onto that.
As you say, I guess you could ask him again, but he gets no response, I guess it would be nice to.
We need to send them the bill.
I'm fine with that.
It might coincide with us bringing our stuff to the lake also, the river rap, so we need to make sure it's safe for those trucks.
Absolutely.
It could be part of the expense.
Okay. Thank you, Denise. Okay, Colleen, we're moving on to correspondence, municipal affairs, medical relations, Minister. Where?
So this is a response from an application we made a number of months ago to be part of the mitigation preparedness program. So what this basically is, after the big flood in 2020, the department came out with a program whereby should you be able to use your insurance, I guess deposit that you would have to pay towards mitigating future, I guess, threats to your community, that you could apply for your money back and use it towards a specific program that would improve your ability to mitigate any disasters in the future. So our application went in based on, obviously, we had a $10 million to $12 million loss during the flood in 2020, so clearly the deductible of $100,000 does not go far for us, but if we could get that returned to us, we thought we would make that application. So we received a letter from the Municipal Relations Minister, now Wyling Flark, who is also our MLA, for the relocation of public infrastructure project, and what we applied for at the time was mitigating our park shop down in the Riverland Park and various things and get the motor water areas. So we received the deductible amount that was related to our first claims mission that we sent in after the flood of $30,482.99. The letter is not clear though, because you could actually access the full $100,000, so we've asked for clarification on when we submit our claims in, will we be just getting the portion of our deductible back returned to the $100,000 worth value? We don't know that answer yet, but in the end, once we get Park Lake back and all the bridges back, I'm thinking our investment, even if it is a portion of that $100,000 deductible, is money very, very well spent for the leverage that we're gonna get on the back end, so.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Okay, we have a supplemental tax deletion, Colleen.
So this one, normally we wouldn't do these at this time of year, Section 2326 of the Municipal Act allows for supplemental additions and deletions to your tax roll. These usually arrive in September of each year, once the assessment branch understands who might have an addition to the roll or who might, you know, remove something on their property or need an adjustment to go in the form of the deletion. So this particular one probably should have came forward last September, it did not, so we're requesting, based on the recommendation of the provincial assessment branch, that we have the ability to go back into 2021 tax roll and make this adjustment based on an overstated assessed value quite significantly and some infrastructure that does not exist there anymore.
Any questions, any comments? Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution then. Moved by Councilor Harret, seconded by Deputy Mayor Headley. Be resolved, we approve the following supplemental deletion to the 2021 tax roll under the authority of Section 326 of Municipal Act and based upon formal recommendation from the provincial assessment branch, Roll Number 71500, levy amount $1,883.03 effective January 2021. On paper. Here. Okay, we are going back to unfinished business. So last meeting we tabled a motion on that fourplex that we were on that was being talked about being built across from the health clinic, so medical clinic. So to get that back on the table, I need to have a removal of reservation, a resolution from?
To remove from the table.
From the table, right, thank you. So moved by Councilor Harret, seconded by Deputy Mayor Headley. Be resolved, the resolution number 2022-22 be removed from the table and open for debate. So just to go back to what we did last meeting, so we had a motion that was brought forward, it was moved by Councilor Nado and seconded by Councilor Pando, and I'm just gonna read it again so it reminds everybody what that was about. Be resolved, we approve variation application B-05-2021, willing Chin on behalf of GC Basanta, very respecting the lots 20 and 21, Block 81, Plan 256 and 270, Main Street East will allow for the intensification of the residential use of the current RT residential two-unit zone to the proposed RM1 residential multi-use zone, as well as approving a side yard setback reduction for both side yards from the required 10 feet to the proposed 9 feet each. These variances to allow for the construction of a two-story, four-unit residential dwelling with two units on the main floor and two units on the second floor. Okay, so I'm opening it up again for any discussion on, yes, Councilor Harret.
I'd like to move for amendment, Collins. We spent a lot of time discussing it last council meeting, it's been since, many of us have gone on site and talked to staff, and I would like to move that it further be resolved that the property owner be required as an amendment to cover the cost of installing water and sewers to the property based on the minimums established under Clause 36 of Bylaw 3204-21. However, should the costs exceed the minimums, the owner shall be responsible for the actual cost of installations. I would move that.
Okay, so I would need seconded then, seconded by Councilor Nado. On paper. Here. So now we're back to discussing that and the original, what we tabled.
It was a full motion.
Okay, so these two, so what the Councilor Harret just added and what we had from the last meeting, so now we're discussing both of them. So do we have anyone that wants to speak to it?
Yeah. I think for myself, you know, I was a little unsure, and so I thought, well, this would be a similar setup to other fourplexes that we have up north end of Mountain, and so I went down there and started looking around, and I guess I would have to say it's very similar in setup, although the area is a little tighter down here just off of Main, it's still the same kind of setup, and you know, it still falls within the variations that Jeff gave us, so I don't know, I would say for myself that I would see the difference a lot of it.
Okay, and we do have Jeff sitting here, if anyone has any questions to ask him again on it, so.
Yeah, I would think, especially in light of the new census data showing where the community is, you know, 1,000 people larger. This is something that us as a council would have to look at, is looking at increasing some population density in some neighborhoods. It definitely does fit within the area, we do have a similar fourplex that was built three blocks down, and we gave variations for its approval, and as a council, I think we want to see legal housing that has grown to this format and size, which has always been a conversation that's been around the table, you know, not people just refurnishing basements and increasing density without our knowledge. Right now we've got someone here who's playing better rules, not really, we're not looking for any parking variations or anything like that, so you know, on the one-foot difference there, you know, and I'll speak to myself as someone who's done some development in the community, I mean, you know, these are not requests that are really far up from what we've seen a lot of other variations that we've heard, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Anybody else? So we've all understand that we're voting on two separate motions here at the same?
Say it's an amended resolution.
As an amended resolution, okay. And I don't need you to read this all again, right?
Well, it's a.
Yeah, everybody understands what we're voting on? Okay, so then I can just move forward with call for vote, so all in favor? Opposed? Here. Okay, we are on to Osborn-Susky subdivision, Colleen.
So this one appeared on your agenda the last minute, only because, as you know, we've sold small lane-sized type of park for Mr. Osborne and Sherry Suskey. Back in March of last year, when they actually subdivided their property, we had a condition on the subdivision such that they were approaching on that particular piece of town property, and so the condition was that they actually refrained from encroachment and redirect their lane onto the road property. Having sold that piece of property to them now, the condition that appeared in the development agreement would be registered as cavey is no longer necessary. So in speaking with community planning this afternoon, they will not be pleased if we just say we sold the property and provide them with a copy of the sale, they want a resolution to remove the condition number two that we stated in the resolution in March of last year. So I just quickly did up a resolution so we can tie up this file and get it off to community and use it for planning tomorrow and close that door. So you know, Blake and I actually went over and signed that sale today in the development agreement, so it's nice to get a follow-up and all of this.
Okay, I think that's pretty straightforward, if there's no questions or comments, we'll move forward with a resolution then. Moved by Councilor Costa Chai, seconded by Councilor Pando. Whereas the Council of Town Nipewa approved the subdivision application 4437-21-8245 with Dustin Osborne and Sherry Suskey by the way of Resolution 2021-53 on March 2nd, 2021, subject to various conditions. And whereas the condition requiring the correction of encroachment on Law 2, Block 4, Plan 6965 owned by the town of Nipewa is no longer required due to the subsequent sale and the effective parcel by the town to Mr. Osborne and Mr. Suskey. Therefore, be resolved that the town remove condition number two, respecting the encroachment as contained in the Resolution 2021-Fix 3 and amended development agreement according. All in favor? Here. Okay, we're in the street lighting call. Or Denise, I don't know, do I have a moment?
Sure, so I'm on the project, and I have a deal, well, an application for streetlights in addition to the CM commercial sector portion, so that would be down Mill Street in front of Fire Hall, Howard Avenue, Stone House, and Hamilton Street as well. So we plan to fill the remaining structure of Hamilton Street this year, so we designed the streetlights there as well. A little corconada that we're gonna carry the streetlights all the way to Fifth Avenue because we're gonna be realigning that street once we do a surface work there as well. So if you're hoping to get streetlights in the right spot, lay out the street where it should be.
I guess we have no idea on timeline then?
No, we'll put this in here, then we'll get the worker put in place and hope that it gives a possible daycare work with. We also did work with design team on this one, so then we have proper illumination on all the intersections, so there's two lights pointing each direction, trying to light them up as best we can, so it's pretty black out there now, but once this is completed, we'll see really good.
Okay, yes, Councilor Harret.
I'm looking at the streetlight, it looks like it's in the middle of Highway 5.
Yeah, so that's what we do, we carry those streetlights all the way up to the Highway 5, supposedly could, so we can light up that intersection properly so everyone can see the turret coming up next.
But it is not on the west side of Highway 5.
Yep.
The map is a little blurry, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Was this fairly close to where we had budgeted originally when we relaid out that CM development? Like, I know it means that for a lot calculation.
Well, it's just the commercial end of those, it's a little bit different, I would have to go back in my file, because the number's probably.
Pretty close, actually, pretty close.
Yeah, no, just for our own as a council, just to know, like, when we, if, you know, if time, whenever, we look at, you know, future expansion, so we know this is that.
Yep, and then we'll also see an operating cost because we're adding more streetlights, so we'll see that in an operational, plot it up for annual bill, to manage the highway for streetlight usage.
So this would give you 24 new streetlights with $28 in total if you want, so you're gonna be double.
That's quite few. Okay, does anybody else, we'll move forward with the motion? Moved by Councilor Harret, seconded by Councilor Costa Chai. Be resolved, we approve the installation of street lighting in the commercial area of the CM subdivision and give the CEO the authority to sign electric service agreement with amount of a hydro in the amount of $131,404.32 plus GST. On paper. Here. Okay, Colleen, Water Services.
Do you have your list, or you want me to?
No, I don't have it.
So this is an annual resolution that we sent into the Water Services Board as part of the project capital planning, they like to get updated on where we are at with our requests, that they would possibly partner with us and assist us with growing the community. So our five things that we put on our list, and some of them you've seen year after year after year, but clearly some get bumped off depending on, you know, if we can put on it, or others get put on depending on the weather, it has to happen with the. So the first one is our water tower repair and maintenance, that's been on the slate for a significant amount of time, but I think we're getting pretty close to once our reservoir is done, being able to have some downtime over there and get the repair done. The addition of a third raw water well site location, as you know, we also in previous meeting approved a water supply study partnering with Mantle Water Services Board to be able to get that study complete, to understand where we need to go with that. That's not mean we're drawing more water from the act of work, it just means it gives us a better avenue of making sure we can produce water and bring it into the plant and we have the ability to take one of our well sites offline if we need to. We were, once again, a meter pit at the High Light Foods to get a better handle on the water use over there. Highway 16 water main extension and lots of Mill Street left station relocation, and we all know what happened in the flood in 2020 with the Mill Street lift being under compromised. We've always understood that part of our project should relocate that, and of course, I should have maybe mentioned a little earlier, the mitigation and preparedness money, that would also see that happen as part of those money. Clearly not insufficient amount of money to make that happen, but any contribution towards that is some part from the Water Services Board, if should that happen, would be really appreciated, so. And I just maybe can't speak to the Highway 16 water main extension as well.
I mentioned that some little floor room there, so we were, that's why I was meeting with the engineers to see that slowed down.
Okay, that seems fairly straightforward, I think. There's no questions or comments, I'll move forward with that motion. Moved by Deputy Mayor Headley, seconded by Councilor Nado. Whereas the Mantle Water Services Board is requesting identification of water and sewer projects slated for the next five years in rural Manitoba in order to prepare a capital plan for the prioritization and allocation of funding. Therefore, be resolved that the Council of Town Nipewa hereby identify the following water and sewer projects to be considered for technical and financial assistance to the Mantle Water Services Board Capital Plan. One, water tower repair and maintenance. Two, addition of a third raw water well site location. Okay. Three, meter pit at High Light Foods. Four, Highway 16 water main extension and five Mill Street left station relocation. All in favor? Here. Okay, asset management.
I might ask Denise to join in on this one. So we all know for the last number of years, there's been a requirement for municipalities in Mantle and Canada for that matter to delve deeper into how they manage their assets. The idea being more closely modeling what you would see in the national business world and looking at, making sure you're tracking the lifecycle costs of your assets and, you know, looking at depreciation, getting the best value of the money. The importance of this over the last few years is much we haven't had our feet in the fire necessarily, we haven't been given a deadline to have it complete, but everybody's encouraged to work toward getting this done. We did receive last year grant $50,000 from the Federation Canadian Health Foundation to help us with our asset management planning, tracking of data, gathering of inventory. We have done significant work in-house, we did not double to an outside company to do this. Staff have been busy with, you know, when we went out nationally, went house to house and for example, took a look at the meters in there, we started tracking what we have, what the lines were made of, looking at all of our data. So you have a document in front of you, it's actually our asset management plan and our levels of service policy. Will it need to be amended? Absolutely, we're kind of new at this, we are doing it in-house, we feel we don't need any special software of any sort and what we could utilize already, you know, in our wheelhouse. And so the document you have in front of you was put together mostly by, against Denise or Management Operations in Dallas, who works very closely with Denise, and then of course, staff input from inventory perspective and all the other things. And so we're asking for your approval tonight, so it'll be part of the filing for the grant monies of the $50,000. It kind of prefaces a little further in your agenda, you're gonna see Bylaw. We decided rather than just complete a plan, we'll do an overarching Bylaw to support the fact we are gonna have a capital benefit plan, and you probably, you know, it would make more sense to get first reading of the Bylaw first and then do the policy and whatnot, but it's the same, what's the difference, whoever wants five points ahead of the other, really. It's gonna be work in progress over the next number of years, and as we gather our data, the assumption is, and as we apply for grants, for example, say you want to apply for federal grants or provincial grants, the idea is if you're managing your assets properly, you will get better leverage of getting those approved because you are a community showing that you understand what you have for your infrastructure. You know if it's old, you know when it needs to be replaced, when you start putting it into a costing cycle that requires replacement and allows you to be successful, I guess as much as we are now, we'll be more successful with the data that we're going to understand. So, unless, Denise, you want to add a little bit to that?
No, that's a pretty good summary. Essentially, we're trying to remove data out of everyone's head, either I have or Chris has, or some older employees, and get it down for everyone to see in a spreadsheet so they understand it properly. That's calling the others, it is a pretty much a living document, maybe best to discover and analyze. They'll be obviously amending it repeatedly throughout the process, once we acquire more data, keep filling it in, including those blank spots. You know, it's quite lengthy, we went in lots of. You know, it's quite lengthy. We went in lots of quite a few spreadsheets, and again, we'll be building that, so it probably will get bigger yet as time moves on.
Sounds like a very ambitious project.
Always a lot of fun.
Okay, it wasn't a word I was thinking. How, how many culvers do we have?
Refer to the spreadsheet, sorry.
Ten quadrants of sidewalk is the one that I would agree with. It's very involved.
It is.
I guess for the public's knowledge too, it doesn't necessarily mean when we replace assets, it doesn't mean the oldest gets replaced first either. This particular analysis of all your assets would mean that whatever is in need the most gets replaced first. So it could be a 10-year-old street, it could be a 20-year-old street, maybe not that 70-year-old street. It's always got use in the quality and condition of the asset, and unless you categorize it and give them a condition assessment, then that's how you start basing your budget and bumping things into priorities.
Against Counselor Dr. I have a question. I, I read through it. It's, it's extensive. It is really impressive. And you, you know, I'm a big believer in data. I mean, how do you manage that, that you don't have data, right? So I mean, I think it's fantastic. I noticed here when we, as we're going through, that under that section, there become responsibilities of administration and responsibilities of council that are going to show up in this bylaw as well. And one of them was council training on asset management. Is that something that we're going to see short term? Is that something, anyone, and how does that work? Are we going to see these items start to show up on budget lines? We did, after we just had a very positive video, as we start looking at, you know, asset management, like I noticed there, because that now has to be framed in our conversation too, and saying that council will be trained in asset management. So as, as councilors went, if, if we pass this, which I assume we will, but I mean, that is something that you are saying that you're taking on, and then, I guess, have we given any thoughts as to where this will fall under as a, is it a budget item? Is it going to be those good folks that sit on public works and now have to take that over as far as those committees? Have we given any more thoughts to how this goes forward?
I'm going to be honest, I think we'd be in already practicing a lot of that. If I can allude to various things, which, you know, like there was a little pushback at times. When you talk about, you know, everybody wanting to put lipstick on that pig and pave that street, you've often heard Dini or us speak about, you have to look at what you have under the street, because you're throwing money away if you do. So we've been practicing that for years. Now, it's, it's getting a better understanding now, because we have data, and we can actually show you, you know, this street's in fair condition, this one's been at a condition, this one a fair or whatever the case. And, and we can look at every year, we can actually swap them into a year and say, we're looking at doing three streets this year, and this is the ones they are, based on being in poor condition. So yes, everybody will have to have some involvement, more from the government's perspective, I guess, from the aspect of your council. But now you're going to have some data to show you what we've always seen and known here, and I think even surprisingly enough for us to actually see it on paper ourselves, rather than just know it's in your hands, is, is way a different change, really.
No, I guess I, I, I'm in favor, but I just, I noticed as you, as you go through and actually read the document, it was interesting to see that the, the, the council expectations on asset management too, which I thought was good to see.
So it's a living document. If it needs to be edited, we'll edit it as many times as we need to.
Okay, everybody's comfortable? We'll go ahead with that resolution. Move by. Counselor Costa check. Seconded by Counselor Pato. Be resolved that we approve policy OP-JD-115 being a policy outlying and asset management plan for the town of Nipaw and establishing levels of service. All in favor? Okay. Okay, we're back to our bylaw that we gave first reading to at the last meeting, bylaw number 221-10-22 regulating lot grading and drainage. I know we had some discussion at the table last time. Counselor Dr. had some questions, I had some questions. Jeff's here tonight. Is there anything else anybody wants to ask before we move forward with the second and third reading? If not, oh, Counselor Perry.
How comfortable are you with this bylaw being the one who will be enforcing it?
Tell me about the truth.
I'm, I'm actually quite comfortable with it right now. Obviously, it's going to be a little bit of, we might have some learning, learning curves on it, mostly just because of some of the grades that were chosen were mostly just made up as scenarios, and so we may have, we may have to address it and alter it once we apply it. But in theory, I've, to some degree, been applying this bylaw since we've originally drafted it, and it's, it's relatively worked, I feel, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, right, that you've been applying even before this bylaw is actually.
I guess I'm not applying the bylaw, I'm applying it's intent.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, sorry, don't want to overstep, okay? That's Counselor Dr. I, I.
I've been stoned, you know. Because drainage, like I said, drainage is a very contentious issue, and I'm glad that we're actually putting forward a working governing piece of paper forward in the community. I think that's real progress. I'm going to go back to some of my example areas that I was asking on last week, so probably the last council meeting, so I'd like to go back to, let's say, former ACU site, okay? So we've got a, we've got a plan as a council that would create 17, could create up to 17 lots.
Just another 11.
Yes, so 17 net lots out there. So as we go and we apply our drainage plan to a new development in our community here, and we know the grades that exist there. Everyone can see it plain as day. So take the house, starting at the top of the hill, down to the next one, down to the next one, down to the next one, right till we get to the bottom. And we take a look at how we progressively move that water. Now, we have to try to facilitate water getting to a street type in that case, and then we get to the bottom, and then we have, obviously as a community, we have to develop a storm pond that gets water off of that street and away from those homes. Now, on, on side of those yards and those grades that are there, I'm going to come back to retaining walls, because that was, that's the one, I mean, because a retaining wall is a significant expense in the development of a lot. You know, we can be talking $5,000, $12,000, $15,000 to put a retaining wall in. So person who gets the house on the top of the hill, are they the ones responsible for the retaining wall, or is it the person below? Or is there any oper, is there any risk in there where we could see someone coming into buying a lot, that they could be stuck having to pay for two retaining walls? Because we need to know that that can't happen, because all of a sudden, a $45,000 lot could instantly become a, well, if, if we're talking another $25,000, right, like we're talking $75,000, $70,000. That, that's my only concern on this, is how we manage that. So first house is built, right here, is that person responsible for a retaining wall to protect that next property? Or is that person who builds the next property responsible for that one?
So we're talking, I guess, we don't know where they're going to buy it, if they're, if we're looking at top, say, if they've bought the very top lot.
Yep.
The original plan is, is to create a lot to the street. The bylaw will outline, if the parching or basically the slope away from the property to the edge is at a 4% grade.
Yep.
If they're able to maintain that 4% grade to their property edge, and it works out to zero ground level, no, no retaining wall, they would still have to maintain a required swale or something, that any residual water would be caught, taken to the street. If they maintain that 4% grade and there's a three-foot drop to the next lot, that will determine retaining wall or landscape slope recording, right? If they have enough land available to, retaining wall would be a necessity if it was impacting structure, where it was holding up either a portion of earth or a portion of the structure of the building. If they're able to maintain structural integrity and the slope would, the slope accordingly to a swale, then they would need lots.
So, okay, but then let's say the person building below.
Yep.
Now, how do they get that 4% grade if they've got a more aggressive grade coming in towards their property?
Well, they would, because they'd be still starting at zero on theirs.
Okay, we're starting from zero from their point, not from their edge block.
Foundation.
It would be from foundation? That, like I said, this is, these are some of the questions I have. Like, a prime example, like I, I look at right now, is I take a look at what we've seen going on Adelaide.
Right.
Right? And I see a house, I see a lot with a very aggressive grade.
Right.
Off to the, facing to the east. Is that person responsible for retaining wall? Not right now, right?
So they were required to walk first and geo work there.
Yeah.
I know it's complicated, I'm sorry I'm a stickler on this, but.
I'm still going to stand with the statement that there could be a potential where an individual purchased a lot, and depending on what they built, how they build it, they may impact both sides. I do feel that's a possibility, so I can't say no.
They buy on a hilltop.
That's right. So, and I think that individual buying that lot would have to either address, address their building, because if their building is, is affecting the drainage and is affecting the neighborhood properties that much, well, they either have to be prepared to support the neighboring properties and protect the neighboring properties, or they alter their build plan so they don't have to do it. Would be, that, that's, that's my feel on it.
Yeah, so, but, you know, in that case there, where it's the old scenario, like uphill both ways, right? I mean, I, I can see that where that, you know, that situation shows up, but, you know, it used to be that, that what was kind of applied was, well, the house above has to take care of the swale, and that's who's responsible for it all the way, and that's how it works its way down the street. So if we look at a neighborhood building progressively like that, right, you know what I mean? If we were to apply that on that East side.
Yeah.
So top house has to build a swale. That means the next house here inherits that swale on the one side and has to maintain, he can't go interfere and dig that or manipulate it for his own landscaping purposes.
But if he did.
Yeah.
He would have to protect that.
Yeah, and then, so then he's going to be responsible for the sale, for the swale now on the east side of his property to where the next one is coming, correct? Because we already know the grade of that hill, like, we know we're setting this neighborhood out that way.
Well, 10%, if I figured it right.
Yeah, like, we, we know that neighborhood's setting up that way right now, so I mean, I'm just trying to apply it.
Yep.
In an area where we've got 17 subdivided lots ready to go, I'm just trying to think about how we protect that, or, and how we can sell those lots, because if, if we can't give those people buying those lots some cost surety as well, right? That's the thing, because let's face it, you know, lots are precious in this community, but we can't get writers on those ones, and I want to make sure that that's not a, a barrier to sale. That's, that's the only reason I'm questioning some of this with this.
Just to clarify though, the back 11 are, are not even finished at subdivision stage, so I don't want the community thinking we haven't been able to sell any. The back 11 are not.
No, yeah, I should say, I should, yeah, I should correct that, but I mean, we have a plan in place, right, and we've got four lots remaining that are prepared for sale.
Three.
Three, sorry, yeah.
Three, yeah.
But, so the next three lots, we know we need, the person above has to build a swale on the east side of their property.
I guess it would also, yeah, Jeff and I talked about this extensively, case by case, we're not even sure where people are going to build. Hence, if you go to ATD in the bylaw, it gives Jeff the ability to basically look what was going on there. The district office has the right to also require an ATD for the, of a retaining wall, that may be possible. If they are, the opinion that the property owner can remain in compliance with the bylaw by landscaping in such manner to drink the water to a swale. Such determination is definitely offset based on site conditions, the current and future development of the general area, any impact to the structure, any potential impact on neighboring properties, and any other conditions being reasonable to make that determination. And I think, you know, I have full faith, I understand what you're saying, but I think Jeff feels quite comfortable with it, case by case. Like, we can't put criteria in here, it's not, we can't make a chart and say this is what it's going to be, we'll have to just deal case by case. So we will definitely look at that hill line, and we talked about it as well, Dini.
Just as a, as a plan, if, you know, as, as we try to market these lots, this would mean as we market those lots, that funds the development of the remaining 11 in behind, or, you know, to get that.
Well, we need to talk, is there something we can do more interior to even the second phase of the development that would provide that avenue for the direction of the water? We don't know that, we, we have hashed that over, but because we haven't concluded the subdivision yet, we haven't really launched a, a final discussion like that, so.
That's fair. Like I said, I'm just, I'm just trying to apply the law.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We don't have those discussions.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to apply right now, you know, and if, if we can test it at this table as opposed to in the public, I think that's better.
I very much agree with that, Dini.
And at the end of the day, we're actually, we'll have a bylaw to go back to and look at, which we don't, which we don't have now.
And the same thing, they don't buy it, you mean, they, they could run that scenario, they, they could, you know, buying the property, hopefully they're advised of the, at the point of sale, that, you know, there is this plan in place, and then, you know, we could review the requirements, review their lot, and then determine what suits the lot best, this is for the construction too, right?
Well, currently, it's very easy for us right now within the community, because those lots are only for sale through the town office, or say, so we, we can understand that and not.
We can't.
Maybe, any, any, I mean, we understand the rules of how it's going to get applied to those lots, but, you know, going forward, like I said, it just, you know, as other developments happen. You know, even such things as just taking up the, the permit, right, as far as the drainage rules now, that you have to take up that permit, and then the $500 deposit that has to build on it until that project is done and signed. These are all things that can be seen as a, some people can see them as a barrier to development. I think they're an opportunity to protect the community, is what I see, but.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Darryl. Anybody else? Okay, that's all the odds. We are going to move forward with the second and third reading, so move by. Jeff, give me a minute. Seconded by Counselor Pato. Be resolved that bylaw number 3210-22 being a bylaw of Towneepaw to regulate the lot grading and drainage of private or public property in Towneepaw be now read for a second time. All in favor? Okay, and we are going to leave this for a third time. This is going to be a recorded vote, so again, move by. Counselor, did you hear it? Seconded by Counselor Pato. Be resolved that bylaw number 3210-22 being a bylaw of Towneepaw to regulate the lot grading and drainage of private or public property in Towneepaw be now read for a third time and passed on the paper. So that vote was unanimous. Carry. Okay. We are back to the ass, asset management bylaw.
So this is just the overarching bylaw directions for asset management.
Okay, no one had any concerns about council getting more involved? If not, we'll move forward with that resolution. Move by. Counselor Pato. Seconded by Counselor Pato. Be resolved that bylaw number 3211-22 being a bylaw of Towneepaw to establish a program to sustain, build, manage, and capitalize assets of Towneepaw be now read for a first time. All in favor?
Sir, pick up your measuring those three leaves.
I know, it's sort of kind of concerning. Okay, we are down to our business. Anybody have anything they want to talk about tonight?
Yes, Counselor. I just want to pass off a congratulations in the community, and that is to Coach Ken Pearson. Passed a milestone with the Upo Titans and that coaching 1,000 games in the MJHL.
I saw that.
And that is a heck of a milestone within the year, and to say that he's here in his hometown and leading the Titans through a lot more competitive season this year, I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, I agree. Through three different teams, I think, yeah, and it's an amazing record, actually. Okay, if not anything else, we'll move forward with opposing the ready. Move by. Counselor Pato. Seconded by Counselor Costa check. Good to have you pulled back. Be resolved that the Council of Towneepaw do now turn this regularly meeting with Council at 7:50 PM. All in favor? Carry.
We stopped there forever last week.
Well, it was a hard one.
You would know how to love the week.
I kept doing my part.